Okay, we're live?
We're live.
Alrighty, welcome everybody to tonight's Planning Commission meeting for the City of Tumwater. It's Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and our meeting is called to order. I'll call the roll with Commissioner Edwards here, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Schumacher, I believe is excused still. Vice Chair Sullivan here. Great. Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Mr. Varell.
Here.
Right, Commissioner Von Holtz, I think is, do we know, is she excused?
Has not heard.
Hasn't heard, so we'll, hopefully she'll show up. And me, Commissioner, alright. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight from anybody? I see shaking heads, no, no changes, very good. Let's move to our minutes for our August meeting, August 8th meeting. Any discussion, any motions? Move approval of the minutes.
Right, that was Vice Chair Sullivan and seconded by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve our minutes from August 8th, 2023. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, our minutes are approved. Alright, let's move to our fifth order of business, recognition of the service on our Planning Commission from Vice Chair Sullivan. Megan, we are so sad to see you go, but thank you, thank you very much for your service. I think it would be appropriate if pretty much anyone here would like to say a few words in appreciation, and then I think we may have.
And I think we'll take a small break.
Okay, then we'll take a little break. Thank you, Brad. Alright, would anyone like to speak up? And then I'll maybe call on you.
I will say that I think she could be a great asset to the community. This is just a very small part of what she does. We appreciate what she's done for the city of Tumwater. We appreciate her whole complex. So, with other things as well.
I want to say thank you, Megan, for your leadership, Chair and Vice Chair. You've been an incredible source of inspiration and mentorship for myself and other members here on the Commission. So, we appreciate all you've done, and we're gonna appreciate you even more now you're gone, you know?
Yeah, and I would just echo what was said. I feel like I've grown a lot, and I've really appreciated the opportunity getting to serve with you over these couple of years. And every time you spoke, I always made sure to like super listen, because I knew it was gonna be something like worthwhile, and then I needed to have think in my brain. And I would definitely say that your reputation for everything that you do precedes you. One of the things that I was really excited about in joining the Planning Commission is that I know someone, Randy Givens, who knew you from Evergreen. And so, okay, like, she was really excited, and was like, oh, she's such a good person and amazing person, and she was definitely not wrong. So, we're all gonna miss you so much, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Same, just wanna say thank you. I'm one of the newer members of the Committee, but I've definitely learned a lot, just seeing how you carry yourself, the level of detail you bring to the job, and what you really put in, which is really inspiring, so really appreciate it. That's lucky, whatever you decide to do next.
Sure, I'll say that. Funny, y'all don't know about half the folks here now, that's pretty. I'm Pete Comatt, former retired Mayor of Tumwater, emphasis on retired, and personally appointed, Megan, a long time ago. And first of all, I just wanna thank you for taking that appointment and agreeing to serve on the Planning Commission. I think you've been a great addition, as some of your coworkers here have talked about. And of course, your work as the other has been outstanding, and really helped contribute to the community as well. So, I just wanted to, I don't know if it's congratulations or not, but wish you well in your next phase, whatever. Thank you for your service of half of the citizens.
So much, Pete. Sure, I'll say something. So, just how this former Planning Commissioner served many years with Megan, and sad when I left, not work with you anymore, and so I know how these folks feel without not having you around for your wisdom and your insights and questioning. I appreciate working with you and having your friendship throughout these years, so luck on next adventures. Amazing things in our community.
I would like to say thank you. I haven't got to work with you much. It's been, well, time flies, it's been eight months, but I really appreciate the help that you did provide me that one time with the public engagement, really appreciate that. And hopefully, if the stars align, you'll come back when you're available.
Megan started the Planning Commission certainly after I started, being in my mid twenties. And you were spending exceptionally great for city staff and also commissioned to have preservers to the Chair and through a lot of big projects. They got me involved, so I understand why you're spending more time. I understand that you have more than 47 things on your plate at this time. You're always obviously welcome to come back to any capacity you choose to have there if you choose. Obviously, it's usual, but you're more than welcome. Part of the message from the Mayor I received, too. Very grateful for what you.
It's been almost seven years. I had to look, it was December, seven years ago, that, yeah, you guys did the appointment. So, thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve alongside you all for all of those seven years, or almost all of those seven years, or a shorter period of those seven years. And thank you to Elizabeth for her incredible leadership. And I have so much faith in all of you and what you're gonna continue to steward forward. And I will miss these meetings. I'm definitely gonna miss Brad's dry humor, so I'll come visit with you emails or something sometime. But yeah, I may still listen in or chime in as a member of the public. I'm not leaving Tumwater, I just have a lot on my plate, so. I might come back, and I really appreciated this seven-year period, and I'm so honored and touched that you guys came back here, and thank you for spending part of your evening to be part of this, with opportunity.
I think there would have been more, but for the other meetings going on, so yeah, a lot of people are gonna miss you, Megan. But we're glad you're still in the community, and yeah, do participate whenever you can. Gosh, I hope you do meet that high bar and keep challenging yourself and all the rest of us to do the best for our community.
I will still be paying attention to what my beautiful city is up to. I'll stop paying attention. I was, I said when I walked in, I was leaving the work session that Brad was at, because I was listening in on my phone, so I'll keep in touch for sure.
Let's go into a brief recess.
I would say about a 10-minute break.
About a 10-minute recess, for those on the phone, we'll be back in about 10 minutes.
Should we be on muted?
Yep, no worries, I can hear you now.
Very good. I assume the video must be working, too. Okay, great. We're gonna resume with our Commissioners' reports. Anyone have any? I'm seeing shaking heads. Okay. Commissioner's report, Brad, Managers' report. Alright, do you want to talk a little bit about the schedule? Call attention to that?
Yes, and in your packet very quickly is the current schedule for the Planning Commission. Again, we were scheduled out through the end of the year, like draw your attention to the December 12th joint work session with the City Council. We discussed this with the City Council's work session earlier this evening. The intent of that discussion is to talk about the WEP program for 2024 and the periodic update. The Council is exceptionally interested in hearing from the Planning Commission on things they think are important, that they pay attention to as part of the comprehensive plan update process. So, if you keep that in line in your thoughts, that would be an excellent way to start the preparation for that.
I'm sure we'll be reminded as we get closer. Okay, let's go to public comment. We have a couple of people here, I can see the names, but Ann Campbell.
Ann Campbell's here.
Pardon?
Ann Campbell is the first one.
Okay. Ms. Campbell, if you would introduce yourself, if you'd like to speak to the Planning Commission, would you introduce yourself, and you have a few minutes?
This is Ann Campbell. I am watching from over in, over by the Southview Center Community College, and I am just interested in watching the planning process, since we just moved back to Thurston County at the end of August.
Great, thank you. Thanks for taking the time to be here. Let's go to Jolt News, or I can't quite make out the name.
Oh, no, you just removed her from the webinar.
Welcome back to Thurston County.
Can we get her back, or will she?
She comes back, I need to wait.
Okay.
Yeah, she should just be able to log back in.
I think, yeah, she'll log, she'll realize what happened. It looks like Christine Rompa, if I'm saying your name right. Ms. Rompa, if you'll introduce yourself, and you have a few moments?
Yes, good evening. This is Christine Rompa, and I work with Puget Sound Energy, I'm the Local Government Affairs Rep. And I am just watching to learn more about your comprehensive plan with respect to climate, so thank you.
Great, good deal. Thank you for being here. And then we have someone on the line from Jolt News, I don't see a name, but if you would like to address the Planning Commission, please introduce yourself, and you have a few minutes.
Hello, I'm just here to watch, too. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks for covering us. Okay.
I will follow up with Ann, if she doesn't return tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, that'd be great, and then if you could paraphrase for her, she's particularly interested in the climate portion, so if she doesn't hear that part, we'll, she gets that, I hope. Let's move on to our, the final docket for the Annual Housekeeping Amendment, item nine on our, on our agenda. Erica, is this one yours?
Yep, this is mine. Alright, so tonight, I'm gonna be talking to you guys about the Annual Housekeeping Amendments. If you wanna go to the next slide. These are staff-initiated Housekeeping Amendments. It's for the Development Code. The amendments, the City Council approved the preliminary docket on September 5th, so we are going into our final docket now. And we can skip this one, too. The staff report contains discussion of the proposed amendments and the draft language. I would like to ask you guys to review that draft language to provide comments for our next meeting. The ordinance will be presented at the November 14th work session, and we will hold a public hearing on the ordinance November 28th. The City Council will then consider Planning Commission's recommendation. For each of the four amendments, the staff report will include a summary, the code sections that are being amended, and the proposed amended language. Okay, let's go to the next one. There we go. So, these are the four amendments we are amending, part of our Development Code about the underground utility requirements, the town center mixed-use first-floor uses, the manufactured home open space requirements, and creating a process to exceed 65 feet for specific industrial uses as far as height limits goes. And then this is kinda diving into the specific amendments. So, the underground utility requirements, it's the general standards. We are clarifying the requirement that new and existing electrical utilities shall be installed underground, and any deviation would be addressed through deviation from requirements in a separate section of our code. This slide is the formal language of the proposed amendments. Again, if you guys could just review in the packet and provide comments for our next meeting.
Our city attorney is in the process of reviewing the actual ordinance itself.
Alright, so the next section of code will be TMC 1823-050, which is the Town Center Mixed Use Subdistrict First Floor Uses. With this, we really wanted to clarify what kind of uses would be allowed on the first floor for mixed-use development. We want to clarify uses for commercial and residential development, yeah, in a certain zoning district. This is the specific changes. The changes are underlined, I believe that's where the changes are. So, we added professional services, medical clinics, child daycare centers, many daycare centers, just to clarify the uses, to provide more of what would be allowed. And then the next one is the open space requirement for manufactured home parks. New development in the manufactured home park zone district shall set aside land for open space. If we can go to the next slide. And also clarifying if land division's not required, just clarifying that open space is required, even if they're not subdividing the land. This also applies to existing manufactured home parks. And the language is again underlined here, and will be in the packet.
And we did the open house. So, this is facing them.
Alright, and the last section of code or sections is the building heights over 65 feet for specific industrial uses, and creating a process to go above the height limits. This one is only one amendment, but there are three separate sections of code that are being amended with the update. Previously, our code allowed for conditional use permits to go above the height limit, but then we had went through an ordinance in 2017, oh, sorry, in 2017, we're allowed to go over that height limit with a conditional use permit, but then between then and now, another ordinance was passed, and we don't have that conditional use permit process anymore, so now we are putting that back in our code.
This was taken out as part of our updated conditional use.
So, this is one of the amendments. It's adding the condition, or that the height can be exceeded upon approval through a conditional use permit. This is the other section for conditional uses under the B uses for building heights.
What?
Yeah, so with that, we researched and put in specific conditions for the conditional use permit, so I would really appreciate some comments on those conditions to verify use would be acceptable in that zoning. And then we will have a brief work session November 14th, and then a hearing on November 28th. I know that was quick.
Next time.
Just so you've got time to research it, as I remember the town center, there are portions of the town center that because of the fly zones, there's no residential allowed. There's no residential allowed in those, and I wonder if a childcare center is a good idea either. This is a portion of the town center that is farther away from the airport, so for example, area just to be able to south of City Hall, there are a mixture of residential uses allowed in there. So, among the various uses that we've been discussing with people looking at potentially developing that area, or developing, so there's some of the uses that may identify. Obviously, we can have a further discussion. But, put it back. Just one more question, it may have been covered.
Is there a height that they're not allowed to exceed? So, there's a process to go over 65 feet, whatever we's outlining that they will not exceed a certain.
93, I believe, is the tax under the official use permitting. When we were looking at various options in other jurisdictions, there's a range. In some cases, there were none. Didn't think that was necessarily appropriate. And we also, there's a condition in there that they can't exceed, to get a, Terry's concerned, there's a, where, you know, cause interference with airplanes, that has to be taken into account.
There's no device.
What sort of structures generally would you see in a light industrial or heavily industrial area that would go above 65 feet? Are we talking about, you know, like, not like your typical office building or skyscraper type deal, or we're talking about like an industrial type of purpose-built structure? You know, like a silo, you think?
Silo, tanks, or, or there could be something related to a process in mind.
Yes.
That's what we've seen in other jurisdictions, but we looked at places like Renton and Cranton, some guys, and some of those kinds of places. But it's limited to industrial uses in our industrial zone, rather than a broader application of.
Because my question there, too, is, I know apples and oranges, but we've talked before about how a lot of the buildings in the old Tumwater brewery were purpose-built structures that, you know, you can't, it's harder to refurbish them into something more like commercially or residentially viable now. So, would there be anything in place for, say, a business opens up, wants to put in an 80-foot grain silo, or, you know, something akin to that, and then the business goes under, is the structure just going to sort of stay there, empty, with no way to like decommission or repurpose it? Okay, that's a.
That unfortunately is the case, even without this issue, where purpose buildings, purpose building for manufacturing and other uses are, in some cases, they can be reused, they built a big amount of building, but essentially, they put their equipment inside, when the equipment goes away, there's a file open space that can be reused. In some cases, that just doesn't occur because of the nature of what they were doing. You know, reuse is always something.
I just didn't know if that was, if, you know, the Housekeeping Plan was the place to have something in there about, you know, what do you do for purpose-built structures, or how do you avoid, like, limit the ecological impact of, say, when you decommission a large structure like that?
I'm pleased with you, everything, and if you have questions, further questions, definitely, if you want to get those to us before the work session, that's always open for that.
Alright, then let's move on to item 10, our Comprehensive Plan Periodic Amendment Update for Conservation.
Brief introduction, Alex Veruch is one of our associate planners with our Planning Division. He has graciously said that he wants to help us with the comprehensive plan update process. So, Alex is now taking over the process, and we're quite excited about that. Tonight, he's gonna start by walking you through the conservation element.
Great.
Nice to meet everybody. Let me know if you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. Brad stole my thunder for the first slide, was just gonna introduce myself. I've been working for the city for about two years, mostly on firm planning and development review, and I've assisted with some of the ordinance updates that Brad and Erica have already brought forward to you all today, and will be helping with the comp plan update moving forward. Tonight, we'll be discussing the Growth Management Act Conservation Goals, talk about the current version of the Conservation Element, discuss specific required updates for the Conservation Element, consider how to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion, and discuss state guidance materials. The Growth Management Act requires that the city demonstrate that each element in the plan meets the 15 planning goals. The two goals required are related to conservation in the Growth Management Act are natural resource industries and environment. The Conservation Element has specific guidelines and policies that ensure the viability of natural resource industries and activities. Additionally, the Conservation Element will need to ensure the viability of natural resource industries in the city through the identification of such plans in the Conservation Element text, and currently, the city has both mineral resource land and forestry. The state legislature also updated the environmental goal in, the environment goal in 2023 to add the requirement to enhance the environment. The Conservation Element contains specific policies related to air-water quality, water availability, and protection and preservation of critical winds, that will now need to address how to enhance the environment. Additionally, each land use designation in the Conservation Element will need to be of an appropriate intensity for where it's applied. Areas of environmental sensitivity will need to be designated as open-spaced or lower intensity designations than other areas of the city. During the 2016 update, the items on the screen were incorporated into the Conservation Element, which included the best available science at the time, and after the comprehensive plan update was complete, the Critical Area Ordinance was amended to bring it in line with state requirements. Topics that we anticipate needing to address in the 2025 update include updating all the maps, the current data, discuss how habitat conservation plans affect the designation of conservation land and protects species and habitat, update critical area sections as required by its state checklist, reference greenhouse gas emission targets that will be included in the new Climate Development. be included in the new climate element, and add references to plans completed since the last update, such as the shoreline master program, thirsting climate mitigation plan, and urban forestry management plan. One required component of this comprehensive plan update across all the chapters is a discussion about diversity, equity, and inclusion. One way this will be incorporated is through the community outreach efforts during the plan update. Additionally, environmental justice will be considered as part of the update within the goals and policies that end up in the conservation chapter. I'm going to go through these slides a little bit quickly as they are just the backbone topic headers of the conservation element from 2016. But I'll read out the main, you know, topics, sentences for the, you know, for each of these. So agricultural lands as one of the main areas of consideration, forest lands, mineral resource lands, wetland areas, critical out for recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geologically hazardous areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Conservation goals, policies, and actions will be looked at more in depth as far as what needs to change versus what's going to stay. And then conservation maps, all of these will need to be updated as a part of the updating for, you know, current data. These sections will all be evaluated once we perform our gap analysis and review the checklist provided by Department of Commerce. And we'll have more information as we move forward. This is a link to the current conservation element and the, these are documents that we'll be using for the update moving forward through 2025 adoption to make sure that we're in line with Department of Commerce and all of the best practices moving forward. Staff will have a similar update, you know, as to this with the general government committee next month. And we'll be working on the gap analysis through November. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback at this time.
Thanks, Alex. Any? Comments? Mr. Tobias.
We've talked pretty extensively, you know, with our collaborations with the tree board about urban forestry areas. But where would you say, looking at Tom Water, are the critical wetland areas? Is it mostly along the watershed of Percival Creek? Or are there other areas that are sort of like critical wetlands habitats for the city?
Yeah, there are a few different. Oh, go ahead.
You go ahead.
There are a few different areas that I see as some of the main ones that I've dealt with, at least from a development perspective. You know, Trosper and Kertzop has a large area of, you know, wetlands kind of coming through there with the, and then there's another extent through, you know, Black Lake drainage ditch and, you know, high groundwater kind of all over the place. But as far as the, you know, wellings are concerned, you know, typically we see those, you know, primarily around our streams and, you know, the, the main, you know, riparian areas throughout the city.
One important thing is the complex that you see when you're in Kertzop and Trosper, on the other side of rural though, those are all attached to the Black Lake drainage system. That's a very extensive system of wetlands and interconnectors. There's also the federally protected Oregon's water use habitat. So that's where the overlap comes between the critical areas and habitat.
Right. I'm not seeing any other questions right now. Thanks, Alex. It was brief, but we will, we will hear it again. Hear more.
Yeah. Thank you. And yes, there will definitely be more as we move forward and start getting into those checklists and bring forward, you know, some of the changes that are going to be required as we go through the update. So thank you all.
Oh, good.
Very quickly, Ms. Campbell, I apologize. This is Brad, my dear staff at the city of Tom Water. I apologize for telling you off. I think it was long, but I'll send you an email tomorrow talking to the president about things you can do to be in contact with the city.
Great. Great. I'm glad she's back on. Glad, glad she rejoined. I'd just like to recognize that Mayor Sullivan has just joined us. Thank you very much. I wanted to say thank you and congratulations. Of course, I had a long city council meeting, unless I couldn't. Sweet chair, you can't just leave. So, so I really want to appreciate all you years of service. And I figure at some point you'll come back.
I'm not leaving this area. Yeah, I will, I will still be supporting this community. Thank you.
You bet. So, and you will be having a new funding commissioner soon too. So the letter went out and they'll be on the next agenda.
Good. That's great. Thank you.
I'll let you get back to it maybe.
Thank you.
All right. Let's rejoin. And let's go to our 11th order on our agenda, which is our comprehensive plan periodic update on the topic of climate. And I'm glad we got Ms. Campbell back for that. Brad, this one's yours, right?
Okay. What I'd like to do is, this is a little bit different from the previous introductions that you've been getting of the various elements. This is a brand new element created by the state legislature as of this year. We are fortunate, along with all the other 2025 periodic update jurisdictions, that we have to complete this by 2025, looking forward to that. So purpose of this discussion is really sort of go through what the requirements are, what we're going to be needing to do. We're going to focus a lot more on the state guidance that has been made available, talk a little bit about what we're going to be able to do with some of the additional funding that the state has provided for this. And we can, we'll talk a little bit, what we've done so far to prepare us to do this work in this way. In May of this year, the governor signed House Bill 1181, which again added a new climate change and resilience to go to the Growth Management Act. This is by far the longest of all the goals. I'm not going to read it all. But the key thing to take away from this is that the climate element is going to be focusing on supporting reductions of greenhouse gas emissions and resilience in the face of climate change. So those are the two big things to take away as part of this update process. The other important thing to take away is how this element is going to have to interact with all the other elements. There are very specific ties to the transportation plan, given with vehicle miles traveled, how to reduce those things, greenhouse gases, there are ties to the land use element because of land uses and locations and wanting to reduce trips and all that kind of stuff. So, and also the conservation, as Alex discussed in his presentation, there will be ties back to this as well. So it's not just creating a new element, it's creating new element and creating all the ties. If you recall from our discussions in 2022, when we were putting together the work program, we said that our intent was to integrate climate change throughout the comprehensive plan, not just have a separate element in this case. That is still our plan, but we now have this particular requirement as well. So there, as I mentioned there, are three things. First is the climate mitigation element that focuses on reducing overall greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles travel, a kind of resilient sub element, which we will take care of in a large part of the work that Erica is currently doing on our Thurston Hazard Mitigation Plan update. This is a FEMA required plan that the state has adopted as a requirement. So the Thurston County is creating a countywide plan. And each of the jurisdictions has jurisdiction-specific appendices that deal with specific concerns for that jurisdiction. So I believe we've had one presentation to you on this. We'll have another one as we finish up the draft element that we're putting together, I mean, the draft appendix. We'll be presenting that to you as well. Another thing that is explicit in the legislation that we need to address is consideration of how environmental justice will be addressed to avoid worsening environmental health disparities or disavowing communities. So we notice a lot of tie-ins to the housing work and two, few other things that we have. Again, I think we touched on this. The greenhouse gases again are the range of gases or other gases designated by the state that cause lasting environmental harm. And one of the things that we have been working on as a city, together with Olympia, Lacy, and the county, is the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, where we started the discussion, what can we do at a regional level, taking sustainable Thurston to the next level, to reduce the larger community's production of greenhouse gases. And so the work that we're doing here, we feel a lot of tie-ins, first of all, to the plan that was adopted by the city in 2021, as well as the now two and a half years worth of work that the subcommittees have been doing on a regional level to that. So we've got a lot of stuff we can pull as part of the work. Again, this is taken from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Again, this, we started with a baseline of 2015. The first goal was a 45% reduction by 2030 and by 2050, an 85% reduction. The pounds of dark blue you can see are actually what we've been measuring, the baseline, and the lighter blue colors are where we're hoping to get this going. So we're not below the line yet. And we've got a lot of work to do. But again, this plan is also supposed to help identify further actions to address that. Just a very quick summary again. This is from our 2021 greenhouse gas advisory that we've come for Thurston County as a whole. The key elements to pay attention to are the 54% in orange, which is our buildings and energy. That's heating and cooling and everything else related to buildings. So that is definitely something within the city's purging how to deal with. The energy code, this thing works on the state level, but hopefully we'll come to, of course, the 24. Will we start to go even further in the direction of helping that? But that's one big area that we're going to need to do. The other really big area is that one in dark red, the 35%, which is transportation. And that's where we start to get into discussions about reducing vehicle mile travel, looking at alternative means of transportation, having land uses closer to the other in terms of work, jobs, and commercial and all that stuff. So to prioritize the need for transportation to meet everyday needs. Just as I mentioned, this is, we're definitely going to be including a lot of things that we did as part of the mitigation plan. All of this is online as well. If you'd like to take a look at the existing, the current plan, you can certainly do that. Again, if you have any questions about that, please reach out. The, the state has identified some four pathways to meet this new requirement for climate mitigation. We are looking at all possibilities and any mixtures of things to do. So we'll talk in more detail about what each of the pathways are as we start to get into the process. Some are fairly detailed. And we're probably not ready to sort of outline everything that we've been thinking about. Here's the details. Starting first at the very top, selecting greenhouse gas reduction measures, definitely have some, this is something that we've done as part of the climate mitigation. So we've identified specific things that we're going to try to do and the expected gain from those. The goals and policies, we're going to be updating and using the ecology framework, this is from the Department of Ecology at the state level, we're going to be updating that to reflect the current state guidance on it. Pathway three is looking at the vehicle miles travel. There have been some studies done at the countywide level. We'd like to see if we can do something on a more specific, on the citywide level. And we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to try to do that. And then finally, pathway four is dealing with actual emissions in the place, which we haven't set out on a local level, to the level of detail. It's, there's a little bit complicated modeling exercise. But I think it's probably a useful place to explore. All of those things in turn will feed into the goals and policies that are developed as part of the element. Also, I want to very quickly, we'll probably touch on this briefly later in the presentation, but I want to note that we now filed for a grant from the state for half a million dollars to do a lot of this work. The state has thankfully provided the funds to do, to pay for people to help us with the work. We need to find the people who are available to do the work. That's another huge hurdle. I'll tell you a lot about later. If you have friends or relatives anywhere across the country interested in doing this kind of work, get in contact with us. We're hoping to hear back from the state shortly. This is not a competitive grant. This is a five for, and we'll just, we'll get you back. Thank you. Resilience sub element, this is the definition from the RCW. This is really the process of anticipating, preparing for, and adapting to changes in climate and mitigating negative impacts, natural systems, environment, and so forth. So think about, and what we're talking about here are things like flood root in buildings, making sure that you don't build in the flood plain in the first place. If you do build in the flood plain, you build to a certain level so you're occupied for doesn't flood very much. Don't build in areas where the ground is settled. You have a few areas already in the city that this probably is quite a good example of what happens when you do that. The whole ground is like, the buildings and everything else shifts. Don't do that. That's really the intent here of the mitigation plan. Commerce has outlined another five step process, a low five steps. We, this is sort of also outlined the process we're currently going through with the hazardization plan, explore potential climate impacts. That could also include heat islands. That could also, I think, there's a lot of things that could potentially hurt hazardous weather, two, natural disasters, those kinds of things. Look at our plans and policies, assess our vulnerability of risk, look at different ways to address those things. Our third pathway is looking at the adoption and the new hazard mitigation plan update. I really think that we'll sort of do a little bit of one and two as well, just to sort of further bolster and support that. And then finally, integrating all this back into the climate. Back a little bit about the hazard mitigation plan. The work on our hazard mitigation plan really has helped us a lot with the steps one through three. We've done that process already with the city departments, fire department, transportation, water resources, all those kinds of work, work out what you need to do. The environmental justice component, again, we need prioritized greenhouse gas reductions in overburdened communities. So that means doing a lot of numbers, only looking at our land uses, where we're locating uses, adjacency to residential areas that are overburdened, et cetera. We need to be doing that kind of evaluation as part of this process. We also need to be prioritizing our actions we take for climate resilience for those communities which would be disproportionately suffer from those compounding environmental impacts. So we're going to need to be thinking about, okay, we've got a lot of areas in the, in the city that do not have adequate tree camp. Those are also some of the larger areas that have a lower income areas. We want to make sure that if we're planting trees in a beautiful park on the edge of town, we're doing equal or more in these areas. But those are the kind of thought processes that we're looking at when we're looking at city facilities and other things that could help. Okay, again, this is the connection for actual land use element, and also the transportation plan, which is, and the transportation plan is really focused on multi-modal components. That means something besides having to drive a car if you were to do something. There's specific transportation and land use things. Again, we talked a little bit about, there's a. Again, we talked a little bit about there's a per capita vehicle miles travel space that will need to do multi-modal concurrency things. This is important, concurrency is important because when a new development goes in, commercial, industrial, residential, they do a concurrency look at the transportation. Right now, our focus is primarily on car usage. The requirement is now to expand to look at transit, to look at bicycles, to look at pedestrians. And as new development comes in, they are responsible for paying for improvements for their impacts to those particular systems that they're not accounting for now. And the goal again is making sure we accommodate all users safely, reliably, and efficiently. Next steps, we filed the application last week. Here, we will start our discussions with planning permission on the particular changes, the new element in January. So this will be one of the first things we really start to talk about. We also anticipate we'll be coming back in June. I don't think two work sessions is going to be enough, we'll see. But again, if we want to draw Megan back, we're only going to keep it to two. We're going to be very efficient. So this is where we're going next time. Four, your next steps coming up, I always like to sell this just to make sure we're a good audience. Austin Ramirez, our Economic Development Manager, will be joining us Thursday in November. We're going to be talking about our current economic development plan and some of his suggestions for things to update. Then in the end of November, planning permission will be focusing on last year's public purposes. That is the water, sewer, police, fire, all public things. And then the utilities element is all the private utilities, so able electricity and so forth. And then, as I mentioned, December 12th, we'll be joining for a session with the city council.
Brad, it strikes me, this topic in particular, I mean, all of them are interrelated, all the elements of the, all the required elements are interrelated, but this one in particular seems especially to call out for ways to sync up with, or align, or have some common strategies in place with the regional jurisdictions, not, so we're not isolated.
Exactly.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I also want to, and I apologize for not bringing this up before, Melissa Jones-Wood, who is our sustainability coordinator, who is our lead for both the climate and the forestry, she will be playing a very active role in updating this plan, as well as the sustainability group at the city. We've got three or four folks who are focused on various parts of that, so we'll be able to draw on her work, not only within the city and the various things like that, but also her work with all the other jurisdictions, and they've been varied. Yes, we're definitely going to be pulling in as much as we can on the regional side that makes sense, but also make sure it works for the city. And that's really the purpose of this climate element, is to make sure that we're reflecting the things we need to do within the city, in addition to taking into account some good ideas.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Just a comment. I tried to read the planning guidance. It's attached to the packet, a particular summary report, climate justice and growth management. And it's full of multi-syllable words, which are not in my vocabulary. And I wonder if somewhere along the line, somebody's going to sit down and try and walk us through that and explain it, because I truthfully don't understand.
We will, as a staff, be interpreting that. I believe the guidance that we've received so far from the state is still a draft, but we're anticipating, I think, under the, under the legislation to finish the final draft or whatever that is coming out of this year. So I'm hoping to get more clarity. And I agree, if, if the people who have the expertise, which I'm going to count the planning commission, are having trouble understanding the guidance to begin with, we have an issue. So that's something, if you identify anything else, or you think on the staff level, you need us to help you with that, definitely let us know, because we'll need to put it in the work.
Mr. Tobias.
On the subject of vocabulary, you mentioned greenhouse gases and emissions. Are those considered synonymous? Like, are all emissions considered greenhouse gases? Or are there, does it have to qualify as like a hydrocarbon to be considered as part of the?
What we're doing is, the state law has actually defined that, and defined what particular gases fall under that category. And in the presentation, I sort of touched on the list of, there are about eight or nine things that are listed in the state definition. But for our purposes, we'll call back on the state definitions. Fortunately for us, it's fairly well-defined. Where it starts to get complicated is how those things actually interact with each other in the real world, who produces what, and how, what are the impacts, how, what, how do we identify where those things are coming from so we can mitigate?
Ready to move on to development code? Yes, good. Let's go to our planning plan periodic update, the development code topic. Not the right one.
Oh, this is a housekeeping.
Yeah.
I want to know if anybody actually recognized that. This is an introduction to the update of the development code. To this point, we've been talking almost entirely about things that are going to occur on the policy, strategy, and action side of the conference. Development code is the, how we take all of those things in the operating plan and put them into regulation. But when you go there and build, and figuratively you, the community builds a new facility, whether they're talking about a school, or a commercial facility, or whatever, the development code is where we translate those policies into things that appear on the ground. So we want to talk a little bit through all the state requirements that have come down at the same time as all the changes that occurred on the project plan and that state side. And we want to touch on a little bit on some of the proposed work and what's going to be talking about, that we're going to fold into this process. So how these requirements relate, very simple diagram topped, that's the state requirements, growth management act, that's all the things that have come down from the state legislature. It's followed into our conference with kind of goals and policies, we provide the broader direction of where we want to go. Say, for example, we're talking about, we want to increase the amount of commercial use in the city of a particular size, we have policies and so forth directing where that might occur, we have the maps that show potentially where it could occur, broad guidelines, making sure that you can get to it safely, transportation wise and more. Development code is where we get into the actual height of the building, how far from, you know, how far it is from other uses, how landscaping, blockers, and all of the kinds of things. And then at the very bottom, missing from this diagram is the building. This required state amendments coming to broadcap, first of all, the affordable housing is like part of the bill. Most surprised we have two work sessions already just talking about all the housing things. There's a companion part of this, which is now the development code, which deals with the affordable housing side. There are some amendments related to clean energy, climate change, critical areas, impact fees, and organic materials, and waste. On the affordable housing amendment side, there are a number of things, and we'll talk a little bit in detail, at least, I won't go through the whole list. But you may recognize some of these things from previous discussions that we brought out trying to help the city council enact their affordable housing plans. Lots of themes will emerge through this process. So starting first on the broad level, this, for all of these tables, we've tried to provide a summary, identify approximately the kind of where the codes are, that are going to be updated, and talk a little bit about the requirements that are coming down from the state. The state has been exceptionally fixated on accessory dwelling units to such a level that they have gone much farther than any jurisdictional code in regulating how big, where, everything else. And I'm editorializing, but I'm not too far off. There are a whole host of new requirements dealing with accessory dwelling. The idea being, this is a potentially easy way of increasing the amount of housing in the city of a reasonable size that could be potentially affordable. Practically, you're not going to see a whole lot of accessory dwelling units built because the expense is pretty high. Because again, even if it's a smaller unit, you're still building the expensive kitchen, bathroom, and those things that are really kind of where the cost comes in the building. And it's going to be a single owner bearing that cost. So they're going to have to make the decision, I want to build a new house. In practical matters, we have seen an uptick in the number of accessory dwelling unit permits filed and issued. An uptick has been probably going from about five to 10 annually. So again, it's going to be a slow change over time. One of the many things, everything's we want to do is start with affordable housing, concurrency in affordable housing, not the one time series. So the changes we're looking at that are important here are accessory dwelling, impact fees for accessory dwelling units, can't be more than 50% of what a regular single-family house needs. Impact fees are things like transportation. We talked a little bit about expanding what the transit, concurrency and transportation impact fees would cover beyond just roads and for cars, parks, schools, all those things are impact fees. So as, as development occurs, the impact fee is in attendance to offset the impact of those developments by building more facility, providing money to buy more, build more Very important one here is allow two accessory dwelling units per lot in every residential area that allows residential use in the city. So currently, we allow water, and so that means every, every residential lot now can potentially put in two. Now, accessory dwelling units could be separate buildings, it could be a basement in an existing house if there is one, it could be an additional floor, it could be an attached part to it. So accessory dwelling is kind of multiple plates. But that's something that will need to be addressed. The other important part of that is the two accessory dwelling units per lot is in addition to the maximum density of residential uses in the city. So currently, for example, in our single-family low zone, we have a density range. So as a minimum, a new project has to provide at least six dwelling units per acre, up to nine dwelling units per acre. And whenever somebody comes in with a project, we evaluate, you know, the land uses, the subdivision process, and are you meeting those densities? Because number one, we want a minimum density so the building's at an urban level, meaning that it makes more sense for providing transportation and utilities and everything else from our urban level cost, but also we want a maximum so there's some level of, you know, you can't go, have more people in this area than maybe the critical areas should support, or other reasons. By adding two accessory dwelling units per lot, that's not accounted for as part of that whole density calculation. So what that's, why that's important is when we look at affordable facilities in the city, we look at what's the maximum build, what's the highest density possible in a residential zone? And from that, we determine potential water, you know, what's our water usage, nine dwelling units per acre, that's nine households to have an average usage rate of so, so downs per minute, and so forth. What we now need to do as part of that calculation, that we haven't truly figured out, is if potentially every lot could have up to two accessory dwelling units, how do we account for that? So we have adequate facilities when that development comes in. Now, that's water. It also means fire, it also means police, it also means other things. So there's a lot of things built into that. So it's a little bit bigger than just saying, good, we can build two more and we're done. There's a lot of background. The maximum size of, for accessory dwelling units can be no less than 1,000. Currently, our limit is 800, so already we're going to have to change that. There's no development or design standards that are for ADUs that are more restrictive than principal pump. And we have to allow conversions of existing buildings to accessory dwelling, even if it's non-conforming, meaning it's closer to the fence line than are currently, are setbacks allowed for them, or the height is higher than what's currently allowed. This would be a case if somebody chooses to build like a garage, something like that. So accessory dwelling units are going to be a big, that's why I spent a little more time on that than some of these other ones. I'm only going to touch on the condos and the smaller residential units. This is important because this affects impact fees charged for condos, and it has a broader application than just talking about condos. Impact fees under this state legislation basically are tied to the size of the unit, the number of bedrooms, the square footage of the unit. So if you're building a smaller unit, you're not, you shouldn't be paying the same impact fee, say for a two-bedroom, shouldn't be paying the same impact fee as a three-bedroom. And or square footage, there's other things. That's a little bit finer detail than we currently have. We have like, if you build a single-family house, you do this, if you build a multi-bedroom, you do this. It's going to be a lot more fine-grained. Another important thing is this adds another way to do short-term, which is something we've talked about as part of our affordable housing strategy, but we haven't implemented yet, now we're required to. Essentially, if you think about a cottage housing development, which is a, a single lot, and all that single lot do have independent cottages, or small houses that aren't, that can be attached or not attached, shared parking facility, and then the shared, everything else is shared. Well, this allows the ability for those individual housing units to have a lot created for just that unit and to be sold. And then the property in common is still being held in common, parking, the stormwater, that's a good, it gives us more flexibility. Design review standards, we have to make sure our design review standards need to bill definition of clear and effective. We can't have more than one public hearing on design review. That's not really an issue for us. Ours, current process is administrative, we don't have a separate hearing. Places like a Seattle, Kirkland, I, as a, I created this slide, I had to take projects through a multi-meeting process. It's a long process to go through. We just have to make sure our code is clear, but it's not a huge change for us. Manufactured houses. State law, back in 2019, was further updated to remove restrictions on manufactured homes. That's anything that's built out of off-site and brought in, usually it's approved through the Department of.
Labor and Industries?
Labor and Industries, they put their tag on it and so forth. Currently, we actually have a limitation on the minimum size for manufactured homes. We don't allow single wives, they have to be doubles of a certain size. That goes away under this, the only things that we can require that they be new, that they're attached to, set up a permanent foundation, and they comply with any design standards that are applicable to any other stick built in the area. Again, I think these are very reasonable things to do and help simplify our regulation. Middle housing is probably the next huge area that we do, and we're going to spend a little time going through it. Middle housing is anything that's not a single family, all the way up to something five or more units. So duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. So duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, trying to think, there's a whole range of things that were probably built, you know, 30 years ago that are longer being built, we either build large multi-family developments or we build single families. So really, the intent here is to build a broader range of housing products, allow for the building of a broader range of housing products. And we're definitely going to have to address that. The important part of this is now, we talked a little bit about the ADUs, we have to allow for these two ADUs on every residential lot. This is eliminating single-family zoning in the city. We are required now to allow for two dwelling units per residential lot in the city. But if somebody has a single-family house now, or just a vacant lot in a single-family neighborhood, they're allowed to build a duplex at a minimum. Build more potentially on other things that we will be discussing. There are some also additional things that can be done if at least one of those units is built as permanently affordable housing. If you do that, you could potentially do a fourplex. We do want that permanently supportive housing. The question is, I'm not sure how many people are going to take advantage of that because the process of maintaining and tracking and doing all that is pretty cumbersome. We'll see. Maybe we will see how those things happen. We don't have any major transit stops, which trigger a whole bunch of other requirements, that slight rail or guided bus rail, whatever. We don't know too much about that. However, it's important to note that when you compare this middle housing bill with accessory dwelling unit bill that happened both in the same session, there are requirements to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or the legislation that are broader than the middle housing. So when we start to get into details about parking requirements and transit, we'll talk through some of the differences between them. There's a potential for, if we allow the two dwelling, two accessory dwelling units per lot, that we could potentially meet this requirement for a minimum of two on a lot. We have to allow at least six of the nine types of middle housing, and the state legislation has illustrations and things that do that. We have to limit design review, very similar to how we have limited design review for single families. There are provisions that are outlined in the state guidance schedule that Commissioner Compa, if you problem the climate guidance to be really opaque, you're going to love this. I don't understand it. And I've actually made an effort to try to understand. There appears to be some path for structuring design standards and design review to help integrate these units into single, existing single families. How far we can go, what the review could look like, all that kind of stuff, we're still trying to figure out. There are limited parking requirements based on the size of your lot, so that will be an issue to talk about. As you recall, we've had discussions about potentially narrowing roads in residential areas. If people, you know, people aren't necessarily going to get rid of their two cars, just because requirement changes until we have the other opportunities for the people to move around that don't require it, which means those cars are going to go somewhere, we'll need to be talking further about that. And some other things we'll get into more detail. So just to be aware, middle housing is going to be a real big topic. Parking for affordable and multi-family year transit. This will affect, there are three different parts to this, I won't go into all detail, but there are two inner-city transit routes that run north-south primarily through the city. Any residential uses that are within a half-mile or quarter-mile, depending upon the type of unit that's being put in, will have, will have to have less parking required for those units. Because the assumption is, you know, you have availability, transit, you have an alternative way of getting around, you don't need to require the highest parking level. We'll figure out how that's actually going to work. The state requirements are pretty simple. If you're within a half-mile of transit, you do something else. What this doesn't necessarily take into account is, you could be within a half-mile of a transit, but there is no sidewalk connection, it's a steep drop off a cliff between you and the transit line, all those practical things. So we need to think a little bit about that. So let's actually look. This is, this is exciting to me, and if this is exciting to you, we probably need to talk. This is actually how we process permit applications that come into the city. This is another piece of legislation that came down this year. The importance here is the state has established pretty rigorous guidelines for how long we have to review an application or we issue a decision. If we have what is known as a complete application, meaning somebody gives us all the materials that we ask for upfront, a site plan, a traffic study, et cetera, et cetera, stormwater report, then we have a set number of days that we have as a staff to review particular applications and turn around and issue a decision. This was 1754, back in 1995, establishing very stringent guidelines. This goes beyond, we now have 120 days to do something, we, in some cases, we're down to 90 days. There are important offerings. Now, there are cases where we get an application from, the application package from an applicant, they've got everything that we need, they have all the information when we open it up, they answer all the questions, it's not an issue. The issue is when they give us something that they call a traffic study that looks like a traffic study, but it doesn't, doesn't tell us what we need to know, the particular impacts to a particular issue, and all these other things, and we have to ask for more information on it. We will have to have tracking, more advanced tracking than we currently have to stop review of applications, stop the clock from running, request additional information, so we can figure it out. Again, this isn't, this won't show up on the planning commission side, but if we don't hit a particular timeline, we have to refund application fees, that's part of that process. Or we may actually have to approve something that isn't ready, but by the clock says we're done. Now, our turnaround times compared to other jurisdictions are actually pretty good. But when we have a high volume, it's difficult to turn it around as fast as we don't have the volume. There are some religious-sponsored housing things that will be addressing that deal with outdoor encampments and other facilities. As part of the 2019 City Council Housing Report Building Work Program, we identified looking at where we can increase density. As part of that housing element discussion that we've had about the need for a broader range of housing types to accommodate, accommodate all income groups, this is definitely part of our broader discussion. It will be driven first by what we're doing on the land use element and the housing element, but we're going to be taking up increases in density that have to be reflected in our zoning code. The planning commission started identifying particular areas or asked the staff to start that discussion. We started down that road a couple, three years ago. We're going to come back to the particular areas that we're going to propose to up so. CPOs, we started the process of updating the CPO thresholds, the idea being that we have existing environmental regulations elsewhere in the code, and we need another process. The CPO provides, is there duplication, is there additional process? And by additional process, that means more time spent on something specific. We'll be bringing that back as well. This applies in some cases, Commissioner Tobias, you brought up the reuse potentially of projects. There was specific legislations passed here that allow for the conversion of existing commercial industrial, industrial buildings for residential purposes. We have started to see a little bit of this in conversion of existing office, of proposals that come to us about office market is, you know, not there anymore, we want it converted to residential. This is another one, I think, it's a good thing, but it also creates some interesting challenges. When a conversion occurs, they could potentially go another 50% over the existing allowed density, and it's, again, as I mentioned, we have a maximum density in a lot of zones, there's another 50% on top of that. How we calculate the physical interaction with such conversions will leave it out. We can't require more parking, we can't require design standards, we can monitor areas, and so, so it's, it will be interesting when we start to see some of this happen, how this actually works out on the ground. Again, the intent of legislation is build more housing. I'll just go through these quickly. Clean energy, these are kind of minor things that we don't have to deal with as much as we're looking at. Climate change amendments, this is the broad category of all the discussions we'll have on the climate element, what things we may need to bring into the development code. As part of the grant funding, we set aside some monies to help with this as we've identified different changes. We will need to update our credit card area regulations to reflect current state guidance. We, I think we have some minor changes to the weather regulations, otherwise we are pretty much up against it. The flood fight ordinance, this will be a minor update. We had a, we worked with the state ecology to identify particular sections that will need to update, so we'll be bringing those forward as part of this policy. No dramatic changes here to updating the CPO. Impact amendments, we talked a little bit about that in other places, there are some very specific things legislation has come in regarding early learning facilities and optimizing impact fees for bicycle and pedestrian facilities, which we. Updating essential public facilities will be started, so just to be aware that this will be one part of that. We have some city-sponsored amendments. If you recall, our inclusive housing amendments we did as part of the larger housing text amendments, we have some allowances in our multi-family zones for additional density. And if you provided affordable housing, you could put more units on the property. We're going to need to tweak that as we review inquiries that are coming in. There are some things that I think create more barriers to the use of that project, so this is a simplification process that we'll need to do. Yes, I do drink water during this. Any general code update, I love this one, that covers everything that we don't know about yet, but we'll go by then. Inpatient substance abuse facilities, this is one that we've had a discussion about a particular amendment of the previous years on the comprehensive plan of that cycle. This is addressing a existing, regarding how all facilities are potential for expansion, where that can occur if they're not performing, all those kinds of things. There is a special section of both the comprehensive plan and the development regulations that deals with essential public facilities, which is essentially those facilities everybody needs but nobody wants near them, so we'll need to be opening that up. We talked a little about the next steps already. Any questions?
Commissioner Veron.
Just one quick question. With regards to the permit timeline, is there a way to assess, or are we assessing the staff available for the intake, since sometimes there's a higher volume? So if you get a higher volume, is there a way to kind of throttle how many applications or permits you get at any given time?
We don't have the ability to turn somebody away, for example. You have to take what comes across the counter. Now, what has been explored, especially during high-peak times like what, like this year, for example, we are on track for another record year in terms of issuing permits and getting permits in, is we definitely explore the option, always the option is to hire more staff. The second option is, are there resources available through consultants or other things to support or, you know, expand our capability for that? The issue with Tomar and a lot of jurisdictions is, of course, we can obviously ramp up staff. Whenever we have a downturn, though, it's, it's a mess. You know, you could go from, we have a staff of five and we're down to two or one. And what, the issue for us with the increasing staff as needed kind of thing is, number one, there's no way to really build a long-term staff, meaning the people, the permit review is, it starts to be complex. And it's also not merely looking at the coding, preparing the set of plans, but also problem solving. Like, oh, this is, this is something that came up five years ago, and it was dealt with this in a particular way, and it had this kind of thing. It's making those connections of having the staff that have the experience to do all that, that's really important. I know the state has been trying to identify, and this is, I know this because I'm talking with some of the staff at towers who are tasked with this, is how do we increase resources for them? The broader issue right now is overall, there's not enough planners trained to do the work statewide. Alex, who joined us today, is from Virginia. We're very pleased to have Erica join us from Thursday. So, but anyway. But, but the issue is, our, our planning schools aren't turning out enough people. I heard a statistic that Eastern, which is sort of, the go-to in my line for mid-entry planners, there's one issue from the state. That's not good, because of retirements and regular retirement, we're losing more than we're putting in. So there's a lot of other things going on that, that we're going to have to try to figure out. I think so.
Why? Why Eastern Purdue?
It's, it's not as exotically exciting as professions like engineering, you know, science, or something like that. I mean, very few people aside from myself go to college and say, I want to be a land use planner. Probably because of childhood, but I mean, there's, yeah.
Commissioner Tobias.
Why be a planner when you could be an influencer? Now, what I was going to ask about, you mentioned conversion of office spaces as well. I've also seen hotels being converted into housing, the Days Inn over on Hawks Prairie, I think there's another one also in Lacey, I don't remember the name off the top of my head, but the, the thing is, though, those are in commercial spaces. So if they have house, you know, housing for people in need there, does that by definition have to be only transitional housing or temporary housing? Because would you be able to have long-term housing as an option if you're zone, if you're in an area that's zoned solely for commercial use? Or would you have to rezone the area?
There's a couple parts to that. In the city of Tomar, in our general commercial, we do have some provisions for residential use. We could probably widen those. So the planning side is, the physical conversion of a hotel space to a permanent residential space is a little bit more complicated. The Days Inn, for example, is, is probably, when it was converted, it was converted towards transition housing for homeless. They don't have a kitchen in each unit, for example, so there's a shared common kitchen, there are other things that are related to it that work in that case. If they, and the intent is, for that facility is to explore funding to convert those into permit units, meaning that maybe a kitchen space, maybe something that, a single room studio kind of thing. So there's a lot more on the building code side that has to be done to get those units up into going. So in some cases, there are some of the units in town that we've seen come across that have like a kitchen in it, or have something like that, where the conversion is a little bit more straightforward. In other cases, it's a little more complex. In other cases, it's a little more complex. Is that enough to make you stay? Want to stay?
I'm sad. It's actually exciting. There are really exciting things coming.
Well, as a community member, you're on our list. So you're more than welcome to participate.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that was a, that was a pretty detailed introduction to that one. It's pretty overwhelming, actually, but yeah, we've got our work cut out for us. Thanks, Brad. And actually, thanks to Erica and to Alex. I don't know if he's still there for your part, too. He's looking forward to it. Okay, it's like our next meeting will be the 14th of November. And we'll hear more on these topics there. And other than that, are there any other final remarks? Motion. I move that we adjourn. This is Commissioner Edwards, seconded by Vice Chair Sullivan. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn our meeting tonight. All in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.